Welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Kristi Monk. I am the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding these proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's joint hearing for the proposed issuance of air permit number 708-0036-X001 to Grayson Carter &amp; Son Contracting Inc., and the proposed issuance of National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Number AL0084480 to Stoned LLC for the proposed limestone quarry to be located at 7440 Mooresville Road, Belmina, Alabama 35615. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the draft permit actions. In addition to oral testimony, the department also will consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments, and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On January 26, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who have previously requested advance notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record of these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit applications, preliminary determinations, and draft permits have been made available for inspection by the public at the office of the department at 1400 Collerstien Boulevard in Montgomery, as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public, and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit written comments may do so. Lengthy statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summaries of such statements may be presented orally. Each speaker will have five minutes to present their testimony. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. The hearing is an opportunity -- excuse me, this hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making permit decisions, and must base the determination only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied the requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to A.D.M. by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department's staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum, as in a question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit applications. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question, which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit actions. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery, as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through the postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit actions and develop a response to comments for the draft permits. The hearing record, final permit determinations, and the response to comments will be posted on the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for the review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now let's move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, a representative of the department's air division, then a representative of the department's water division, then a representative of Grayson Carter &amp; Son Contracting, then any elected officials or their representatives who have registered to speak. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they register. I now recognize Ms. Pam Hunt to present a statement on behalf of the department's air division.
Good evening. I am Pam Hunt, Chief of the Construction Materials Section, which regulates permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for quarries for the air division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. In addition to me, the department's air division is represented by Mr. Doug Carr, Chief of the Energy Branch, and Ms. Emily Williams, Environmental Scientist. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Air Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's air pollution control regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal air pollution control regulations. Grayson Carter &amp; Son Contracting Incorporated has applied for an air permit for a facility that involves the crushing, screening, and conveying of limestone. These processes contain equipment that would be subject to federal new source performance standards. These regulations were developed by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and are uniformly applicable across the country. The department administers these regulations in Alabama. These regulations limit emissions of dust from crushers, screens, and conveyor transfer points. Dust from these processes would be controlled by wet suppression systems. The wet suppression systems would be capable of meeting or exceeding all federal and state requirements found under the regulations. In addition, wet suppression systems would be used to minimize dust generated from vehicle traffic within the site. Any dust generated from the facility's operations would be in quantities that would define the facility as a major source under the state and federal air pollution permitting programs. Based upon our review of the air permit applications for this facility, the department has proposed the issuance of an air permit developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements. While the department understands that there are concerns surrounding the siting of a facility such as this, including traffic, noise, property values, and others, the department does not exercise zoning authority and may consider only comments relating to air quality in its final decision on this request for an air discharge permit. A.D.M.'s authority regarding quarrying operations and other mining operations is limited. The department does not have the authority to regulate other aspects of the mining activity, including blasting. Blasting is regulated by the state fire marshal. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by Grayson Carter &amp; Son Contracting Incorporated with the conditions of the proposed air permit would not result in violations of applicable air quality standards designed to protect human health and the environment. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed. Thank you.
I now recognize Mr. Robert Glover to present a statement on behalf of the department's water division.
Good evening. My name is Robert Glover, and I'm an environmental engineering specialist in the Mining and Natural Resource Section of the Stormwater Management Branch in the Water Division of the Department of Environmental Management. The Mining and Natural Resource Section carries out the permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for the discharge of treated effluent from mining facilities within the state of Alabama. The Water Division is also represented this evening by Mr. William McCullough, Chief of the Mining and Natural Resource Section. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Water Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's water pollution control and water quality regulations. The department also has authority to implement federal water pollution control regulations. The draft National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, permit issuance proposes authorization for discharges of treated effluent from the limestone quarry and associated regulated activities through five proposed outfalls towards the state of Alabama identified as Limestone Creek and an unnamed tributary to Limestone Creek. Limestone Creek and the unnamed tributaries to Limestone Creek are classified as being suitable for fish and wildlife. Based upon our view of the NPDES permit issuance application for this facility, the department has proposed to issue the NPDES permit, which was developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements, which are designed to be protective of water quality. A.D.M. does not exercise zoning authorities and may only consider comments related to water quality in its final permitting decision. Similarly, A.D.M. understands other legitimate concerns may be held by the public, including truck traffic, property values, aesthetics, proximity to residences, noise, and blasting. A.D.M.'s authority regarding mining operations is limited to the regulation of the discharge of effluent of the water to the state. The department does not have the authority to regulate the mining activities itself or these other important topics. The department has made preliminary determinations that compliance by Stoned LLC with the terms and condition of the proposed NPDES permit would not result in any violations of applicable state water quality standards, which are designed to protect human health and the environment. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are reviewed. Thank you.
I now recognize Mr. Randy Thompson to present a statement on behalf of Grayson Carter &amp; Son Contracting.
Good evening. My name is Randy Thompson, and I'm a corporate officer at Grayson Carter &amp; Son Contracting Incorporated. First, I would like to thank the Alabama Department of Environmental Management for the work that they do and for the opportunity to participate in this public hearing. Grayson Carter &amp; Son has been a locally owned and operating civil construction company for 27 years. During this time, we've been honored to play a small role in the growth of North Alabama. We are a hometown company with hometown values. Currently, we employ 422 individuals. Of these employees, 260 are residents of Limestone County. Another 115 are residents of Lauderdale, Lawrence, Madison, or Morgan County. As all of you are aware, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to discuss the air and water permit for the quarry located in Belmina. Shortly after we submitted our permit application, we were made aware of concerns related to this site. We have used various consultants to research these concerns, and we are confident these concerns do not apply to our site. We believe this quarry is needed in Limestone County to support economic growth and to maintain our infrastructure. Our quarry, if permitted, will generate sales and severance tax revenue that will be reinvested into our communities. The quarry will also create approximately 75 new jobs within the first 18 months. We are committed to being a valued member of the community, both as a corporation and as individuals. Lastly, we have taken our responsibility to protect the quality of the air and the water very seriously. This is our community where we live and the community where we're raising our families. We have diligently pursued the process set forth by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management in collecting and providing data. We are confident that we have fully met all of A.D.M.'s requirements for our permits. I am also confident that we will operate the Belmina Quarry in a manner that will have minimal impact on the community. Equally important, I am confident that Grayson Carter &amp; Son will have a positive impact, both economically and socially, on the community. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. When someone is speaking, please don't make commentary. I don't have any registration cards for elected officials, and so now we'll begin with receiving comments from members of the general public in the order in which the cards were received. I would ask that each person make a statement, step to the microphone, and make sure the microphone is pulled down to where it can capture your voice. Quickly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent. While speaking, please direct your comments toward us, not the audience, to ensure that court reporter can accurately capture your testimony. Please also remember that this is not a question and answer session. You must limit your comments to no more than five minutes, as I have asked that lengthy statements be submitted in writing. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in a five-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony, summarize your comments, and submit your full statement to the department and write it for placement into the record. Barry Keith Fleming?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a longer document with the technical information and more cited data that I'll submit to you afterwards. This is a summary that I'm going to read. Thanks. My name is Barry Fleming, and I represent Alabama Audubon. As the Chair of the Conservation Committee and on behalf of the statewide organization Alabama Audubon, we oppose the permit request by Grayson Carter &amp; Son Contracting Incorporated for air and water releases from Belmina Quarry. Access to the site is approximately 2,000 feet from the braided waters of Limestone Creek and 1,000 feet from the smallest tributaries that cross the land. A quarry on this land will have multiple potential fugitive emissions into the air and water environments of Limestone Creek. This creek is a critical water source for Limestone Bay, which is the premier aquatic environment in the Wheeler National Wildlife Refuge north of the Tennessee River. Wheeler Wildlife Refuge and the easternmost refuge in the Mississippi Flyway and a winter refuge for migratory birds, including Alabama's largest duck population. Limestone Creek and Limestone Bay serve as resting areas, feeding and watering places for migrating birds, and is nurseries for the bottom-dwelling bent dick micro-invertebrates that form the base of the food pyramid of any aquatic ecosystem. This area is also where birds from waterfowl and wading birds, including herons and the charismatic and usually popular sandhill cranes, to raptors feed and nurture their young. A quarry operation will expose earth, which creates airborne particulate matter and waterborne sediment. When exposed to fine particulates, birds, when exposed to fine particulates exhibit reduced respiratory capacity, respiratory distress, elevated stress levels, and impaired reproduction. Birds as diverse as herons, waterfowl, gulls, raptors, and wrens disappear as fine particulates increase. Wetting the ground during excavation and prior to transporting materials to reduce fugitive air emissions will lead to the suspension of dirt and materials in water, increasing runoff into adjacent water systems. Such runoff could threaten several federally endangered species that utilize or exist in and around Limestone Creek, the resident spring pygmy, sunfish, the gray bat, and three species of snails. Sedimentation and loss of ecosystem stability in Limestone Bay will be devastating for migratory birds, the largest number of snow geese, ross's geese, white-fronted geese in Alabama winter in Limestone Bay. Thousands of sandhill cranes and numerous federally endangered whooping cranes visit the bay and surrounding areas each winter. Sedimentation from quarry runoff will reduce the food sources that these birds depend on, and birds are already in crisis. You may have heard that over one-third of the birds, or three billion birds, have disappeared from North America during the last 50 years. It would be a travesty to destroy one of the most biologically rich and bird-dense winter grounds in the state for short-term economic gain. The proposed quarry for Belmina would be far less impactful in the area, ecologically less ecologically diverse, and less important to the bird populations that are emblematic of Alabama's rich environmental heritage and contribute to the region's economic health. According to Alabama State Parks and Ducks Unlimited, there were 700,000 visitors to Wheeler National Wildlife Refuge last year. I once again thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
I now recognize Greg Pate.
My name is Greg Pate. I am the Director of Experiment Station Research Operations for Auburn University and the Alabama Agricultural Experiment Station, and I've been asked to provide a very brief summary statement on behalf of the university today. Auburn University operates the Tennessee Valley Research and Extension Center, which is located within two miles of the proposed quarry. We recognize the A.D.M. review may be focused on whether the applicant can meet air or water quality standards. The university has identified potential environmental risks that could negatively impact groundwater that services the research center. Based upon a study of geological formations and a site visit to the location by Mr. Greg Dyer, Principal Geologist for Nova Geotechnologies LLC, the development and operation of the limestone quarry provides potential operational risk to the research center. These potential operational risks include, but are not limited to, reduction or loss of groundwater source water, enhanced karsh processes and/or sinkhole development, especially regarding the southern portions of the Tennessee Valley Research and Extension Center, and impacts to the stream flow within Limestone Creek and unnamed tributaries from which the station derives irrigation water for agricultural research. Auburn University will be submitting further written documents to A.D.M. and make available a copy of the report completed by Mr. Dyer at a later time. University appreciates the opportunity to share this information and our concerns with A.D.M. in this matter. Thank you.
And now with now Mr. Sharon Millan?
Millan.
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 Okay.
My name is Sharon Millan, and mine's is on a personal level here today to talk to you guys here on the board. I was born and raised in Belmina. I lived here for 30 years, and I have several concerns about the quarry, and I've been doing a lot of reading. And I was looking at the dangers of a quarry being in a community. These are some of the side effects for that. Air, noise pollution are the two major effects that the wrought quarry can create. Invisible dust particles proven to cause progressive incurable lung disease. Long-term exposure to particulate matters is strongly associated with heart disease, strokes, and infertility, and pregnancy complications. Habitats for wildlife would be destroyed due to cologenic dust proven by health hazardous dust created by grave gravel is considered toxic. Studies have established a strong link that residents within five miles of this proposed quarry would be affected, areas like Belmina, Mooresville, Green Bay, and Pine Ridge, due to these cascading events resulting from particles, matters being prevailing due to winds. It would affect the young and the elders with respiratory illness as well. The wrought quarry would not only inspect the surrounding community, but lives that we are talking about, thousands within this area. Even if it's only three or 3,000 lives, lives matter regardless. We're talking about homes, the new industries that's coming here. It could affect that due to the breathing particles. To the board, I propose this. It was a question, this is a personal question. I know you guys will not answer it, but would you please consider, would you consider putting this in your backyard? My answer would say, no, I don't think so. That is a personal thing that I say. And I'm not getting into a religious matter or things like this, but I know everybody has a conscience and have beliefs of things, but my thing is, I want to treat people like God expected us to be treated, to one another. And when I say that, this can affect each other's lives, and as I sit here and look at these citizens around this area, their eyes, that they either would be willing, they wouldn't even be willing to put the quarry in their backyard. Would you? I wouldn't think so. And I'm going to read a scripture. Matthew 22:39 reminds us the second commandment, "Love thy neighbors as you love thyself." Jesus' love tells us that people, their next greatest responsibility is to love their neighbors as dearly as they love themselves. When we say we love one another as God loved us and spread His hope and light, if you love your neighbors, you would not consider putting this quarry in their communities. I give back to the court.
I now recognize Reverend Cody Gillen.
You got close enough. Well, good evening. I'm so glad you came to our hometown here. I think that this place is actually closer to the Belmina post office than is the Tanner office, so welcome to the Belmina campus of the Calhoun Community College. And I am actually a former student of Calhoun, so I'm just delighted to speak here, and we had it here at my former alma mater. Well, thank you so much for an opportunity to speak, and I want you to know that the Belmina Methodist Church had its origins at the Union Church in Mooresville. It's the old brick church, and we have been a worshiping congregation ever since the 1830s, and ever since the 1830s, we have gone down to the Limestone Creek for baptism. And I'll tell you what, I don't think that Grayson Carter &amp; Son are considering the fact that next to the River Jordan, Limestone Creek, for us, is holy water. And so for them to put in a quarry that's going to not only remove the well water of our neighbors and poison the ones that will already be there, it is going to remove our ability to have baptism by submersion, and I don't think they're going to put a baptistry in my church. I know for a fact that they were offered land somewhere else, but they chose not to use it. It's interesting, too, that in the school that my children go to, the ones that go to my church, there is an asphalt plant operated right next door. Guess who operates that plant? Grayson Carter &amp; Son. And guess what? They were offered land somewhere else from there, too. It seems that they want to choke out the children that live in our community, and right next to our friends Grayson and Carter &amp; Son is a little baby they want to choke out right now. And I want you to know that we are watching, that God is watching, and I don't know if He'll like what He sees. One day, we all will rise from our graves, and we will meet the Lord in the east. And I wonder if you will be able to answer the question, my friends Grayson Carter &amp; Son. And I hate to include "A.D.M." too, I feel like y'all get beat up too much, I really do, but did you do everything you could to make sure that your neighbor was taken care of? When they were blasting, did you stop them? When they poisoned our air, did you stop them? When they poisoned our water, did you stop them? When they made the value of our homes in such a way that we could not escape, did you stop them? them? I wonder what your answer would be in front of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. He's coming again, friends! I'm sorry, I get to preaching. I don't want to preach to you today. But I want to impress upon you that this is a very serious matter, that these people are poisoning the air of our children, and we need your help. We need your help right now. And if there's anything that anyone can say today that makes you think this doesn't need to go through, please listen to them. Because we're still going to try to go down the water, even if the water's so low, we can't baptize. Because that's been our tradition, even before you were born, even before A.D.M. was an agency, even before Grayson, Carter, and Son were a business, and almost even before Alabama was even a state. Help us to continue those traditions today. I thank you so much for your time, and I welcome you to our wonderful community here at Bellemina.
B-A-R, do you know who I'm talking about? Thank you.
My name is Murphy Bars, and I represent Mitchell Frazier Farms. I'm here to speak about the day-to-day experiences of the people who currently live near the West Huntsville Rock Quarry. That quarry is a little under eight miles from Bellemina and engages in similar practices that the proposed quarry will undertake, making it the perfect case study for displaying what everyday life would be like for people who live near the proposed site of the new quarry if it were ever approved. Two weeks ago, I spoke with a number of residents who live near the West Huntsville Quarry. Their chief complaint centers on the quarry's blasting activities. Most of these residents receive zero warning prior to these blasting events unless they go out of their way on their own time to contact the facility itself and specifically request that they be sent email alerts or text alerts about the blasting, which most residents don't know to do. This means most residents are caught off guard every time blasting occurs. According to these residents, the blasting can be characterized as, quote, "shocking, frightening, and earth-rattling." Multiple people I spoke with have small children or pets who live in constant fear of the blasting and claim if they had the financial resources, they would move, solely to have peace of mind again for their families. Other residents, however, not only take issue with the mental disturbances from the blasting, but also the physical damages it causes. Many of these people's homes have undergone structural damage that decreases the value of their homes and property. Their houses now have cracks in their brick exteriors and paint chipping on the interior of their walls. Their furniture is regularly damaged, and appliances like toilets and sinks sometimes are broken from all the violent shaking. To make matters worse, the quarry has not just affected their lives and their homes. For instance, the heavy truck traffic has gotten so bad that some residents will no longer take their dogs for walks or let their children go outside and play anywhere but very close in their yards. The trucks have been described as incredibly noisy and a regular nuisance that interferes most mornings with school traffic. According to these residents, these trucks also drive at high speeds that most definitely exceed the speed limit, flying through stop signs and dropping gravel all over the main roadways. The drop gravel is due to the truck drivers failing to put covers on the back of these vehicles. This gravel not only damages the road, but is a hazard for other vehicles and pedestrians, too. One resident told me they saw a motorcycle rider attempt to avoid this gravel on one of the main roadways. Unfortunately, the rider's wheel still hit a part of the gravel, causing him to wreck his motorcycle and injure himself. Another person told me that gravel from the roadway flew at his sister's car, smashing it into her windshield, completely breaking it, because the car ahead of her threw up gravel left on the road by these trucks. Fortunately, she wasn't injured, but easily could have been. Additionally, these people are plagued by the quarry's dust. It's constantly getting all over people's homes and vehicles. In fact, at night, these particles can actually be seen floating in the air with flashlights. Sometimes the dust gathers on the trees also, and it looks like snowfall. The dust is irritating, too. It gets in people's eyes and goes inside their houses, accumulating on their furniture, and making it feel like sand is constantly everywhere in their homes. The dust also regularly creates a haze in the sky, leading concerned residents to believe they're breathing in a variety of unknown toxins daily. The final and perhaps most important point is that these residents feel as if they've exhausted every resource in an attempt to stop these problems. But nevertheless, the problems persist. Multiple residents told me they or their neighbors have spoken with their city council members, workers of the quarry facility, representatives from A.D.M., or really anyone who will listen to them at this point. But to a person, they all feel their comments are going in one ear and out the other. In essence, many of these people are simply resigned to the idea that their options are limited. They can either deal with these problems, or if they have the means, they can try to uproot their families and move away. It's important to note that everything I've shared with you is really only a glimpse into the numerous issues faced on a daily basis by the people who live near this West Huntsville quarry. I'm sure there are countless other stories and problems I've not shared. It's abundantly clear that the experiences of these residents is like a canary in a coal mine. Serving as a warning to us all and demonstrating it would be foolish, arbitrary, and capricious to think that a permit issued for the Bellemina quarry with the same limitations as the West Huntsville quarry would not be as equally ineffective at protecting human health and the environment. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Amber Martin, and I'm a resident of Bellemina. And my comments are centered around the anti-degradation determination and the EJ screen data that is contained in the permit. Page 35 of the NPDES permit states that the department has determined that the discharge proposed by the permit applicant is necessary for important economic and social development in the area of the outfall location in the receiving water. And it's perplexing to me that this type of preliminary determination could be made without first consulting the area of the outfall itself. And to my knowledge, no one has visited the area of outfall, Bellemina, Mooresville, to discuss the impacts to the people who live there. And my hope is that in this public period comment process, A.D.M. will reconsider their determination to possibly include information such as the loss of economic stability to the area of the outfall. We are in the process of completing a community survey, and currently, we're around 55% complete. And we have over 140 residents, and 80% of the community of Bellemina own their own home. That's higher than the 77% homeownership rate in Limestone County or the 68% homeownership rate in Madison County. An economy needs communities like ours, who have generational roots here. Bellemina has also over 60 citizens of working age that are providing their skills to businesses and the local economy. With the degradation of the water that will occur because of the quarry, many of us will likely choose to move, and that will result in a loss of workforce in a job market that continues to suffer from a widespread labor shortage. I went through a three-mile radius just to check how many jobs we had available right around our area of Bellemina, and I stopped counting at 85 job openings. And I got through around 60% of the businesses within that three-mile radius. So, I would hope that that could be considered as evidence that there are plenty of jobs for our community. And the other item that I would like to discuss is the EJ screen information that the permit contains. It is not accurate for the radiuses that are shown in that permit. So, the demographics and the other information in that report does not accurately reflect what we have in Bellemina. And myself and others in the community are going through, we haven't made a community survey that addresses every single thing that's in that EJ screen document, but kind of the highlights to show that that information contained in the report isn't what we have there in our community. And we'll be including that when I send in my final comments. I'll make sure that all of that is included. And I think that's all I have to say.
My name is Janice Thornton-Manning. My academic background and much of my published research is in the field of pulmonary toxicology. A review of the scientific literature regarding the impact of limestone quarrying on the health of nearby residents has revealed numerous adverse health effects. A quarry produces particulate matter, PM, much of which is less than 10 microns in size. This material, PM-10, is breathed into the lungs. Smaller particles penetrate the lungs, crossing into the bloodstream, where it can cause systemic toxicity. Larger particles have been shown to cause COPD and other lung damage. Silica, a byproduct from the quarrying of limestone, causes silicosis, a type of pulmonary fibrosis that is often fatal. If this quarry is allowed to proceed, the residents of Bellemina will be subjected to chronic exposure to particulate matter and silica, not only from the crushing activities at the quarry, but also from the pollution and dust from the numerous trucks transporting crushed material from the site. The scientific data I reviewed showed that humans chronically exposed to quarry dust have increased incidences of eye irritation and other eye problems, respiratory and heart diseases, cancer and infectious diseases, anemia, reproductive pathology, adverse pregnancy outcomes, including birth defects, infant mortality, and shortened life expectancy. Children, elderly, and those residents who have asthma, emphysema, and chronic heart or lung disease are most susceptible to the adverse health events associated with living near a quarry. Based on the demographic data collected by Ms. Martin, as she just mentioned, almost 40% of Bellemina's residents are either elderly or children. We were unable to collect individual health data because of privacy reasons. But I would like to note that over 50% of the residents in this community are Black people. Black Americans are more likely to have cardiovascular and lung diseases than white Americans. Black children are 2.4 times more likely to have asthma than white children. Further, maternal and fetal mortality is increased among Black Americans. These data indicate that a large portion of the population of Bellemina will be more susceptible to the adverse health events associated with the quarry. Epidemiological data has shown increased hospital visits and shortened lifespans among susceptible individuals living near a quarry. A rock quarry has a lifetime of as much as 100 years. Based on the data provided this evening, it can be reasonably concluded that a quarry in the proposed location will have a catastrophic effect on the health and well-being of this historic community. I urge you to use your authority given to you by the state of Alabama to refuse the permit to this quarry, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sam Frazier. I live across the road from this proposed site. My family, Mitchell Frazier Farms, owns about, owns, well, the house is located on what we call the Home Place, where we have 400 acres. We own a 200-acre parcel of property that is separated by one small parcel from the property in question. That property, it fronts on the Limestone Creek, and we have all the property that does as well. In addition, we have all the property in the general community. My family has raised cotton in the Tennessee Valley since at least 1810. So, I know what this community is like. I grew up in it. I understand what agriculture is like, and I understand the challenges that economic development imposes upon all of us. I want to first say that I do not believe that you have jurisdiction of this matter. There are three statutes, which are, two of which there's general agreement about. One forbids the location of a quarry or blasting within two and a half miles of a public school. My colleague, who represents my family and this larger community, Jim Knowles, will address that, perhaps an additional statements and reports written to you. In addition, there is a statute that prohibits facilities of this kind within one mile of a TBA super site. And we all know about the location of the Toyota site, which is well within that distance. So, there are two state statutes applicable to Limestone County, which forbid this kind of facility being conducted here. Those were passed together in 2009 in an effort to regulate quarries and blasting in Limestone County so as not to harm the valuable assets of our county. We all are aware of the economic development that has boomed in our part of the county and in Madison County. It is important that Limestone County participate in that movement, but participate in a manner that is not harmful to the community and benefits all of us. If this kind of development occurs, it is hard to say what would follow it, because most things would be prohibited. I have hired an expert to evaluate its effect on my farm, the 400-acre Home Place. He tells me it will devalue the property by 40%. I suspect that may be a modest assessment. I suspect that there's very little I could do with my land. Nobody's going to want to build houses next to a quarry. No industry is going to want to build if their operations involve painting. No industry is going to want to build if their instruments, which they certainly, all of them have and need, will be disrupted by the blasting. And there certainly will be no commercial development, because there'd be nothing to support it. So, the part of the county which has the most commercial development potential will be made greatly reduced in value, and it is hard to imagine what kind of development could be carried on there, even agricultural. The dust that probably would be generated will affect the grade of our cotton. So, there's no economic reason to do this. I know that there's a long lesson to follow the money. If you follow the money, it ain't there. The lady before spoke about having this in her backyard. This is in my rock yard. And there's more to it than that. Don't just follow the money, but take into account the other, we believe there are serious defects in the application itself. We believe it ignores historical properties that are of great value. There are several that are national registered properties within a mile or less of this property. There are Indian burial grounds, there are slave burial grounds, there are numerous... There are Indian burial grounds, there are slave burial grounds, there are numerous endangered species, the water table is endangered. There is no good reason environmentally to permit this kind of development. But finally, and most importantly, we ask you to remember that we are dealing with citizens here who have a right to live their lives in peace. We have a very unique community, ladies and gentlemen. We would like to invite you to join us at our meetings on Thursday night at the Belmina Methodist Church. You will find a group of people, black and white, rich and poor, who are working together to defend their homes and their community. We ask you, do not push the desires of greedy development, which have no good economic reason, every bad environmental result, and every conceivable detriment to the survival of a unique and special community which the state of Alabama, the county, and you, ladies and gentlemen, ought to be dedicated to preserve. At the very least, we ask you to delay your decision until the law issues are resolved. The county has submitted law questions to the Attorney General for an opinion. If you don't do that, we will then be forced to go to the expense of preparing for an appeal to an administrative law court and then to a circuit court, and that's not fair. So, we ask you, give us a break. Do your duty. In the name of God, do your duty. Thank you.
And I'll recognize Jim Knowles.
My name's Jim Knowles. First, a procedural matter. We are concerned that if A.D.M. issues the permits to the permatees, there will be a